Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Check one, two, check one, two, three.
Did everybody get bumped off?
Practically.
Harold, that was my fault. I'm sorry about that. I had a technical issue. That councilmember.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Actually.
Does this turn my volume back on? Did I just turn myself back on? Okay, great. So, I've got it so I can control it on the computer, but I'm actually using my phone. So hopefully I don't accidentally disconnect. I've done that before, right?
We've all at one point done that.
Good evening, Mayor Golden. Mayor, Rob Alabon wanted us to let council know that he is on a virtual meeting for Bridgeport, and he will join this meeting just as soon as he is able. It may be council time, but.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody's here that's supposed to be here. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order the Hazlet zoning board of adjustment to be held on Monday, December 14th. Call the meeting to order at 6:45. We do have a quorum present, and number two says, "Consider for approval zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes." We have the minutes from the last meeting, which was on the 15th. If nobody has any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 15 June.
This is Harold. I move to approve those minutes.
Harold, okay, is there a second?
Yes, this is Hillborne. I second.
First seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Do I need to keep calling Jessica's name even though she won't be here? She's absent. Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion, I guess I'm supposed to vote on this too, am I not? Okay, and I vote aye also. So the motion passes five to zero. Action items, 3A, hold a public hearing and consider a request to vary from the interior side yard setback requirement of Chapter 14, Exhibit A, Section 3.2.4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hazlet for construction of a swimming pool and pavilion. The subject property is half an acre in size, located within the R2 Residential Suburban Density II zoning district, and is described as Lot 30 Block C of North Glen Phase 1 subdivision, more commonly known as 2119 Birchfield Street, Hazlet, Tarrant County, Texas. Jim, is Wes doing this? You have the floor, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board members, this is a side yard variance request. The applicant is desiring to construct a swimming pool and a pavilion within the 15-foot, required 15-foot side yard setback. Based on the application that's been submitted and the site plan with that application, if this was approved, this would be a six-foot encroachment to the required side yard setback. So it'd be nine feet from the property line. As y'all are aware, the applicant has to prove or has to meet certain criteria in order to be granted a variance. Those criteria are set out by the State Local Government Code. I'll briefly go through those criteria and outline staff's position on each of those criteria. First criteria that has to be met is that the variance should not be contrary to public interest. The purpose in a side yard setback is to ensure compatibility throughout the neighborhood and also to ensure that development or construction does not impede on a neighboring property's, a property owner's enjoyment of their land. The variance that has been requested does allow for a side yard encroachment that would be, would not be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. It could possibly encroach whether sound or other things along the fence line of the property. The second criteria that needs to be met is that it cannot be due to any, or it has to be due to a certain, a special circumstance. A special circumstance is one that usually goes along with its apogrypha, the land, or the shape of the property. There is no such circumstance in this case. The third criteria is that little enforcing of the ordinance would render the property, or be a, render it unnecessary hardship. The, sorry, okay. The enforcement of the 15-foot side yard setback is not causing a hardship. The applicant can still construct a pavilion and a swimming pool in their backyard. They would just have to meet the side yard setback to do that, and they've got plenty of room to do that. And then the last criteria is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The spirit of the ordinance is to require a 15-foot side yard setback. And the, again, to do that to meet the conformity and the, the nature of the neighborhood. And by granting this variance, the spirit of the ordinance would not be met. Staff finds that the variance request does not meet any of the required criteria and recommends denial of the request. I do want to make sure that y'all understand the zoning ordinance requires that 75% of the board vote in favor if you want to grant the variance. So we'll need all of you to grant, all of you to agree and support that, since we've got one person out today. I can answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions for Wes? Is the requester present?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this interior side yard setback?
So, Mayor Golden, my name is Ethan. I'm the owner of the construction company that'll be doing the project hopefully. And I, I think that the reason that we're, we're all here and looking at this is when I first met with Mr. Hardman, the resident of Hazlet, there was a big concern about the fact of safety for children. Keep his children safe outside of a swimming pool, but still maintain some sort of integrity for the visual effect for the rest of the neighborhood and make sure that everything increased the value of the rest of his residence homes by what he built. And we came together without, we need the actual setbacks and everything up front. That maybe if we put it on the side over here, we're on a fence, a permanent fence that ran along, and he could still have his very young children play in the backyard freely without having to worry about the experience that his close friends have had to, had to experience of losing a child to drowning in the swimming pool. I do understand that, that this is a luxury item. And in Texas here, that's something that, that we do like when it's, when it's very hot outside, is to enjoy that. And when we do have small children, we want to keep them as safe as possible. And by, I think that Mr. Hardman and I came to the agreement that getting on the side yard with the permanent fence that blocked off the rest of the yard was the safest way to be able to do that, unknowing that we needed to be, or meet these, these side setbacks.
Mayor Golden, this is Diana Buchanan. Just for etiquette sake, if I could remind everyone, please make sure that you're muted if you are not speaking. If you have a computer and you are also using a telephone, please make sure that the volume on your computer is turned completely down. And the gentleman that just spoke, if you would be kind enough to give me your, Ethan, if you would give me your last name, and I'll also need your street address.
It's Ethan, E.T.H. Aiden. And the last name is Guhl, G.U.H.L. And the address is 4710 Keller Hicks, Fort Worth, 76244. And it is on part of the, it is on one of the plans that was submitted, I think that Wes was going through.
Thank you. I just need it for the minutes. Thank you.
Well, hello. I am one of the residents here in the Northland subdivision. My name is Keidra Norwood, and I have a question for the, for our neighbor, for the applicant who is petitioning for this variant approval. The immediate question is, were your plans submitted to the HOA for approval prior to us getting to this point?
Yes, ma'am, they were, and they were approved by the HOA.
Inclusive of the encroachment possibilities as well?
All the plans that I submitted to the city were the same plans that I submitted to the HOA for the project, and they approved it with the stipulation that the shingles on the pavilion would match the shingles of the house.
Ma'am, I'll be needing your address, please, for our minutes.
Yes, the first name is Keidra, K.E.I.D.R.A. Also with my husband Troy, T.R.O.Y. The address, 2114 Glenbrook Street, and it's Hazlet 76052.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. One additional follow-up question on that. With the approval from the HOA, other than the shingle, did they, did they give you any indication that this was being done as a hardship under, like a variance under hardship under Section 10.5 of our, our HOA declaration or our guidelines? Did they provide justification on why they approved it?
No, I can pull up the approval from the HOA regarding this, but.
I'm sorry. If I could just point out to you, Ms. Norwood, we really appreciate participation in the meeting. However, the HOA rules and covenants do not apply to our meeting at this time, and so those are the type of questions that will have to be, be asked outside of this meeting. So if you have any input, positive or negative, about us, this being granted or denied, this is, the public hearing is the time for you to actually do that, or if you have questions, how the city's ordinances apply. Thank you.
No, no worries. Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. In, in reference to an opinion of how, or either yea or nay, I can appreciate the, the homeowners or the applicant's justification or logic or reasoning, reasoning for wanting to do so. Unfortunately, from a standpoint of, of ours, of, on the Norwood side, we are against it, simply because of, from our understanding, it may have some clouded view of ownership or the, the encroachment may potentially impact us negatively from a resale standpoint, just from an engineering. So, you know, not with, without having that complete level of expertise, just the initial optics of it is a little frightening for us as homeowners. And we would definitely look to protect our investments. We can appreciate wanting to further appreciate your, your property, and, and we hold those same values as well. And, and we're, you know, very eager to continue to see this neighborhood grow and be, be a jewel for the city of Hazlet. However, knowing that we all purchased half an acre lot, and I can just speak for myself, we, we feel like we can get what we want done within that half an acre and within the, the guidelines of our HOA. So for us, you know, just hearing it and understanding and, and being cognizant are very conservative about the future impact of, of your proposal. We will have to definitely not be in support of it. But we wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. This is the mayor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this interior side, side yard setback? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion and action.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The, the builder identified himself, but the other gentleman on the screen did not identify himself. Is he the property owner, and could he please just identify himself, as, as we usually?
Yes, my name is Thomas Hardeman. I'm the property owner.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment, question? In, in Wes's review, it, it doesn't appear that there's a whole lot of wiggle room here for us on the zoning board of adjustment. If it doesn't meet the criteria, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's appropriate for us to, to consider approving it. But that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to start a discussion or at least get a couple of comments from, from council.
I, I agree, Mayor Golden.
And this is Akam Maro. I understand the, the want and the, to have the nine foot instead of the 15, but I feel the 15-foot setback is a requirement for a reason, so I agree. I don't believe it falls into one of the reasons for variance to be, be approved.
Yes, this is Commissioner Rob. I have to concur with Commissioner Maro. While I understand what they'd like to do, regret, regrettably, I think the 15-feet side yard setback is is essential to preserve property values, not only of that property, but the neighbors as well. And I would hope that the applicant could find, could continue with the project and make it safe for children, but within the setbacks dictated.
We do need pretty much everybody, well, I guess if we, if we don't approve the request, we don't need 75%. Is that correct, Wes? Just to clarify. So we just need a majority. We just need a majority of us, and it sounds like we probably have that. Harold, you haven't chimed in, but I don't know that it's really necessary. Is anybody comfortable making a motion?
I will. I move to deny the variance request for 2119 Birchfield Street. This is Maro.
Is there a second?
And Hillborne, second.
Any further discussion? A roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams? Harold?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. Patricia Hillborne?
Aye. Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Bob Golden, aye. So it's unanimous, five-zero. The motion passes. The request is denied. I, I think there's no reason to go to executive session. Obviously, no reason to consider items from exec. If nobody has an issue, we'll adjourn at 7:03. Okay, we are adjourned. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Hazlet City Council for Monday, December 14th. Call the meeting to order at 7:04. We do have a quorum present. Mayor Protem, do you mind giving us a prayer, please, sir?
No, not at all. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming to these items before us. We ask you to give us the wisdom to meet the best interests of our citizens. We also ask for your protection for our residents, our first responders, and our staff. Christ's name I pray, amen.
And if we hit the flag, we do the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Citizens' participation and comments. Did we have anybody signed up, Ms. Diana?
Mayor, I did not have anyone sign up in advance.
Okay, I'd like to afford anybody on the call who wants to say anything. You'll have three minutes. I'll, I'll pause here in just a second. If you would, introduce yourselves and also give your address. And then you'll have three minutes to, to say anything you'd like to the council. So I'll be quiet for a second here.
Now, Mayor, this is Gary Holsey. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, sir. We, I had my mic off. Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Very good. I'd like to speak on an item. I apologize. I don't know what item number it is. Harold, can you help me out?
The Chapel, whatever.
I spoke with you earlier.
Do you want to speak now, Mr. Holsey, or do you want to wait?
I'll wait for it, ma'am. I appreciate it. I think it'd be more time.
Okay, that, that sounds good. That, item 9G. Okay, is, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, on to number four. Boards and commissions discuss, consider, and act to appoint place six of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Ms. Diana, are you handling this one?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. Give me just one second here. Get the right picture on the screen. Again, Mr. David Sheffield has applied for place six of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. If I could, please remind everyone, if you are not speaking, to mute your microphone. If you are using a telephone, make sure that the audio on your computer is turned down so that we don't have a lot of feedback. I would appreciate it. Thank you. And this position is the ad hoc or ad hoc industry representative on the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. It's to be filled by someone that is not an employee of the city and who is a representative of real estate development or building industry. And residency is not required. However, Mr. Sheffield, I'm happy to say, is a resident of Hazlet, and he is a professional in the building industry. And this position has been vacant for some time. And so I am excited to recommend that council appoint Mr. David Sheffield to place six of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee through the end of the term September 30, 2022.
Anybody have any questions for, for Diana?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that recommendation just made by the city secretary.
Is there a second?
This is Harold. I have a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero. Items of community interest. A couple items here to cover. 5A, the City of Hazlet offices and the Hazlet Public Library will be closed December 24th through December 27th for the Christmas holiday and on January 1st for the New Year's Day holiday. 5B, the first day to file an application for a place on the May 1, 2021 general election ballot is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. The office of mayor, council member place two, and council member place four will be on the ballot. Next item is monthly reports. You have all those in front of you. Anyone have any questions or comments about any of the monthly reports? Then these are for the month of November.
Mayor, this is council member Hillborne. I have a, a statement or perhaps a request for our staff regarding the hotel occupancy tax. We have collected $7,500 into that account thus far. And I, I would like that at the time that we reach 20,000, that perhaps the staff would be able to propose a, a possible use for the money. Now, it may be that, that the proposal says that we use it when we get 100,000. I, I'm not saying that we need to use it when we get to that point, but I'd like to see a plan, the beginnings of a plan in place when we get there. So at the rate we're going, you know, it's going to be sometime, possibly this year, that, in this fiscal year, that we get there. That's all.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about any of the monthly reports? Okay, let's go on to number seven. Staff reports to update active items, projects, and event recap. 7A, update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issues.
All right, good morning, Mayor and council. We are still operating in phase two. I don't see any changes to our business hours, work schedules anytime soon, unfortunately. All departments are reporting no issues with the way we do it. Again, we're still not seeing that many people coming in and staying at City Hall. They're typically just dropping things off. Libraries reporting no issues, and so we're just going to carry on. They're typically just dropping things off. Libraries reporting no issues, and so we're just going to carry on. Kind of a COVID number recap. Obviously, the numbers are increasing and hospitalization beds are being taken up. But in November, we had a total of 28 new cases in the city. This month, we're already at 21. Last month, we had 24 that recovered. So far, where we have eight additional ones. We had 73 total cases in our county response area last month, and we're already at 47. But the good news is we still have no deaths. Court will continue to be held via Zoom through the end of the year, and we'll continue to reassess. We do have a couple of volunteers that have either had the COVID or their significant other does, but it has not affected our ability to respond. We have canceled all remaining fire department training sessions until next year, and we'll reevaluate that. Again, January the 16th is when we will test for our new volunteers, and we're coming up with a plan now to figure out how to social distance and get the testing done. So we're probably going to have to be more of a scheduled timeframe than what we normally do. We, we have postponed our annual awards banquet to a future date to be determined. The fire department members felt that it was very important that we do the annual Santa canned food drive this year, especially during these challenging times. So we kind of had the touchless Santa and took him around on the fire trucks out in the city and the county on December 5th. It was a very successful event and appreciated by Community Link, who are the ones that serve the, the Hazlet citizens. Let's see, the county is gathering information to determine how many vaccinations will be needed for the first responders. It will, it will not be mandatory for the Hazlet Fire Department members to take the vaccination at this point. There are a lot of first responders that are still concerned with potential unknown side effects. And then I would end with, Rob, do you have an update on in-person meetings?
Rob is going to join later. He said, I think, at the Bridgeport meeting, they have executive session.
Got it. I, I mean, I don't see all, I don't see this going away anytime soon. So I feel pretty confident in saying that, you know, we, we won't have to do in-person meetings for the rest of this year. How about that?
Chief, do you have a feel from any of your discussions with folks at the state level on when the vaccine might be available to the firefighters?
I, when my, my last meeting was the, today was when they were supposed to arrive. But what I, the, they've been gathering, sending out little survey monkeys, trying to figure out who's going to take it now, who might take it in the future. So it's got to be, it's got to be coming up pretty quick. It's just a logistical nightmare. They're trying to figure out not only when public health gets these vaccinations, but now, how do you, if Hazlet, if I use our paramedics to give out the shots to our members and eventually even community members of whatever that might look like for every city, how are we logistically managing and controlling all of that? And that's what's kind of got it bogged down right now. So I would still think that within the next week, I, I think people will be receiving shots of those that want them. So that's my best guess, Mayor.
Not trying to hog the show, but I've got a follow-on question to that. The, the second shot, three weeks later for the, for the vaccine that's out there, I think, what, if any, changes in procedures do you foresee in the near future, if any, for those folks who do get the vaccine? Because typically, you're notified, are you not, whether or not there's a threat of, of coronavirus on a call or not? And then you, you have to gear up differently if there is a, a threat of coronavirus. Do you, do you see at, at any point in the near future that if you had your two shots, that, that you wouldn't gear up like you've been doing for pretty much the last year?
No, I, I think it's going to be treated as you, your, your potential COVID patient that could spread. And, you know, I don't think we know enough about the vaccine and what it really guarantees that you will or won't get, or for even how long. So, yeah, the, the risk versus reward is not there to put our guard down.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
And I just want to remind too, again, council, if y'all have any, any needs for the N95 mask or eye protection, especially if you're doing city business, please reach out to me, and we'll make sure that you're, you're taken care of.
Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll go to 7B, Alliance Texas Hazlet Accessibility Improvement Project Monthly Report for November 2020.
Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've got the full report there. I'll hit the high points and then answer any questions you may have. Of course, one of the biggest ones this last month is Tarrant County College did vote to participate in the TERS at 50%, as is Tarrant County. I broke that down in the report. If you look at page three of the report, best projections right now are Hazlet will pay 3.9 million, Tarrant County would pay three, and Tarrant County College would pay 1.7 million of that. So instead of Hazlet taking the 9.6 million over 20 years, that really has reduced the, the amount that the city of Hazlet will have to bear by itself. Both of those other entities have seen the value of the project. They, they will also benefit from the development along this corridor, and it's much appreciated that they've gotten in there and helped. If you go down to page six of the report, the PED blackout, that's the project end date where we had the engineering issues. We paid Tech Dot back, but we have also now received a little over $110,000 to reimburse that. Was it Fund 30, Marcy, I think? I caught her drinking. Fund 30, which is, we didn't overspend, but we spent much quicker in that fund than we anticipated when that engineering reimbursement stopped. And then in January or February, we expect to get that last 300,000 from Tarrant County, which I'll work with Marcy and Travis to make sure that Fund 30 is balanced and that any remaining goes back to type A for the money that they put in during that period, so that all the, we're as close to level as we can get. Again, engineering's done. There's no more updates on that. It's just going to be construction engineering as we get going. Let's see, the advanced funding agreement, I clarified last time, they're not canceling the advanced funding agreement. They're going to do a new one. So we are actually operating under the existing AFA. We're just still working on the matches. We're handling the gas lines. It's local contribution. So those numbers keep changing as far as what Hazlet's expected to put in directly to Tech Dot, because we're handling those projects, or those costs directly. That counts towards our total contribution, as we've discussed all along. So our, our number's not going up. It's just changing on what we're going to have to transfer to Tech Dot. Environmental, we did receive a reimbursement of $519,000 for the mitigation bank credit from Tech Dot. Again, that basically goes back into that amount that we expect to expend on the project. That doesn't change it. It's just a matter of where those funds are coming from. Right away, we had a meeting Friday with the, they're going to be the construction, engineering, and inspection, I guess, managers of the project, Freezing Nichols. They were shocked. I'll say pleasantly shocked, pleasantly surprised that we have closed everything for phase one. I'll skip down a little bit on this statement. Sunoco is out of the way. Their product work is done. XTO expects to be done now, January 15th. Instead of December 31st, I notified Tech Dot, and they said they didn't see that as being a negative impact based on the way the project is laying out to start. So we don't have any more details. We've been asked, you know, are we going to start on Intermodal? Or are they going to start at I-35? Once we get notice to proceed and get into our pre-construction meeting, we'll hopefully have more of those details. We can hopefully influence that a little bit. We really can't tell them, other than phase one, where to start. Let's see, that was really it. I skipped all the way over those. Again, we've paid XTO. They have given us engineering plans, and they're scheduling work, and they hope to be done by January 15th. So phase one, all we've got to do now is get to the point where we have that number we're supposed to transfer to Tech Dot. Then they will give the notice to proceed to Zachary Construction, and then we'll start. It could still start late January. We've talked about possibly late February, but Tech Dot's trying not to get right to the edge of the build grant deadlines, and we're trying to help them. So that's my update. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions with that? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Number eight. We have three items. 8A, approval of the November 9th, 2020 regular city, city council meeting minutes. 8B is the approval of the November 13th, 2020 special council meeting minutes. And 8C, approve of participation agreement between the city of Hazlet and Tarrant County College regarding, regarding the college's participation in Hazlet reinvestment zone number one relating to the financing of Alliance Texas Hazlet Accessibility Improvement Project and authorize the city administrator to sign saying. Those are the three items on the consent agenda. Anyone have any, any questions, comments? And if I hear none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Mayor Protem. First, I'd like to thank Thad for convincing Tarrant County College to go along with this. And I should have said something on the last, our last item, but we have a lot to thank you for, for convincing these people to participate in the TERS, not only this one, but the others that have participated. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Yes, this is Hillborne. I second, and I also second Warren's. Congratulations, Thad.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Public hearings, ordinances, and action items. 9A, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a request to amend the site plan and grant variances to section 5.2.4B Bravo 3B and section 5.2.4 Delta on Lot 1A, Block 1, Brooks and Street Edition, being 1.42 acres located at the northeast corner of Schoolhouse Road and Lewis Lane, more commonly known as 209 Schoolhouse Road.
Yes, Wes Morrison will take the next several items.
Your floor, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a request to amend and approve site plan already. It's adding 10 additional parking spaces. If approved, this site would go from 18 parking spaces to 28 parking spaces. In addition to the request for the site, for the parking spaces, they're asking for two additional variance requests related to the new parking. One is the variance request from the landscape ordinance that requires landscape islands for every 10 spaces. They're not proposing any additional landscape islands. However, they do have these areas. This area is surrounded by landscaping, and it does have, exceeds the amount of trees required by the landscape ordinance. So staff recommends approval of that variance. The second variance is the parking lot screening requirement. The ordinance requires any vehicle maneuvering or parking to be screened from the public roadway. In this case, they'd be required to be screened from Schoolhouse Road. However, due to the topography, Schoolhouse Road is so much higher than where these parking spaces are going to be. Even if they installed the required landscaping or screening, they would still not be blocking the visibility of the parking spaces being added. So staff recommends approval of that as well. Planning and zoning commission conducted their public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of 5-0 to amend or to approve the site plan and for the two variances to be approved as well. Can you answer any questions that you might have?
This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to the site plan and the variances?
Mayor, this is Gary Holsey, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Just my own application. This, these additional parking spaces are for the church. Is that correct?
Yes, they are. Yes.
Okay, I just, I couldn't see who was requesting. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, if everyone's comfortable, or if somebody's comfortable, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, this is council member Hillborne. I move to approve the site plan amendment and variances to section 5 dot 2 dot 4B 3B and section 5 dot 2 dot 4D for Lot 1A, Block 1 of the Brooks and Street Edition.
Is there a second?
Mayor Protem, seconds.
Mayor Protem, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? A roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. 9B, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a site plan amendment to an approved site plan for Lot 2, Block 1, Alliance Westport subdivision being located north of Westport Parkway, approximately 0.5 miles west of Intermodal Parkway. Wes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a, what I would call a minor request to the site plan. It's actually to the building elevations. The applicant has, since the approval earlier this year, the applicant requested to change the elevations, primarily on the east side of the building that is used as a storage. There was going to be a, a canopy that was going to be supported by two poles and really not enclosed. The applicant, and you can see on your screen there, the applicant is proposing to enclose that and just extend the walls out going to the east, so that storage area is now enclosed on two sides and open still on the east side. By doing that, they're also extending the roof line to have a consistent look there. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the request by a 5-0 vote. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
Mr. Mayor, this is Joe Schneider with Hillwood Properties. We, obviously, this is part of a development within the Alliance Texas program within Hazlet, and we are in favor of this minor change to the site plan.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak for or against the site plan amendment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation. Any comments, questions from any council? Again, if you're comfortable, I would entertain a motion then.
This is council member Morrow. I move to approve the site plan amendment for Lot 2, Block 1, Alliance Westport subdivision.
Is there a second?
Mayor Protem, a second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. 9C, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a site plan amendment request to Block 2, excuse me, Lot 2, Block 1 of Intermodal Commerce Park Edition, generally located west of Intermodal Parkway. of Intermodal Commerce Park Edition, generally located west of Intermodal Parkway, approximately twenty six hundred feet south of Westport Parkway. You have the floor, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a another amendment to a site plan that you approved earlier this year. The this is regarding building number two on the site plan. They're requesting to add eighteen thousand five hundred square feet to the existing square footage of building number two. By adding the square footage, the site still complies with all of the PD regulations for parking lot coverage. And planning and zoning commission held their public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. I can answer any questions that you might have.
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the site plan amendment? Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration and action on the recommendation.
Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tim. I'm just curious, do we know why they are interested in adding eighteen thousand five hundred square feet to building two?
They have they've shared with me and I don't want to put that on the spot, but he may know more about the details. But they share with me that they've got a potential tenant that's interested in having that additional square footage.
Okay, great.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Or if not, I would entertain a motion.
This is Mayor Pro Tim. I move that we approve the site plan amendment for lot two block one of the Intermodal Commerce Park Edition.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Councilmember Morrow.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tonya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes four zero on to nine D. Hold a public hearing discuss, consider an act on a final plat of lot thirty dash R one of Blue Mound Estates being a replat of a portion of lot thirty R Blue Mound Estates being four point nine five two acres generally located northwest of Maxwell Road within the Haslett Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Tarrant County, Texas. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a replat of the lot thirty R into two lots being lot thirty R one and then the remainder of lot thirty R thirty R one will be four point nine five two acres and the remainder will be four point nine eight three acres. The property owner of the remainder of lot thirty R is not participating in this. That's why it's only creating the lot thirty R one. Lot of thirties and Rs in there. Sorry. The single family home is being constructed on lot thirty R one. Staff has reviewed, DRC's reviewed the application and planning and zoning commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this final plat? Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration and action on the recommendation. Comments, questions, anybody? If if not, I would entertain a motion.
This is Harold. I move to approve the final plat thirty R one of Blue Mound Estates.
Is there a second?
Hillborne second.
Hillborne seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Harold Williams? Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tonya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes four zero. Nine E discuss, consider an act on awarding a contract for RFB twenty twenty dash zero two five Intermodal Street Panel Repairs.
This would be, yes, City Engineer Travis is good.
You have the floor, Travis.
Thank you. I just want to make a note that the previous three items were accepted through the engineering office in the transition from Walt to Wes. And I really appreciate Wes hopping in in the middle of them and taking them back over so that it removed a few things from my plate. But it was a pretty seamless transition in between the two individuals. So now on to this item. The RFB twenty 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 dash oh two five was authorized for for advertisement on October nineteenth. The low bid was one hundred fifty one thousand one hundred and seventy five dollars from XIT paving out of Waukesha Hatchet, Texas. Checked out their references. All of them checked out. Well, funding has been approved in the budget and this is under budgeted numbers by seventy eight thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars below budgeted numbers. Staff recommends awarding the contract for Intermodal Parkway Street repairs to XIT paving of Waukesha Hatchet, Texas. With that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does our does the motion need to include the amount or up to the amount?
I would think that we'd want to not to exceed the the bid, but Rob, you're not on on yet, are you?
You need to state the contract amount. That's all you need to do is state the contract amount and it's we can't exceed that award unless there's a change order and they'll come back to you.
Did you get that? Okay, Trish? Okay, Jim says in your motion, if you want to put the contract number and then if they want to do anything in excess of that, they have to do an amendment and come back to council.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I move the city council award the contract in the amount of one fifty one thousand one hundred and seventy five dollars for Intermodal Parkway Street repairs to XIT paving of Waukesha Hatchet, Texas and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract documents.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tim seconds.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tonya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes four zero. Nine F discuss, consider an act on an intermo, excuse me, on an interlocal agreement ILA with Tarrant County for restriping of Westport Parkway.
This is awful, Travis.
Travis, you have it, sir.
Absolutely. So this actually came out of a relationship that built with the county over the last couple of years. And after they had finished Blue Mound and Avondale Haslett, I was commenting how good their striping crews did and said we were getting, we were looking at bids to redo Westport Parkway and explaining how high they were and the precinct three engineer, Richard Schiller, said, why don't you work with the county? We can we can stripe things outside of our jurisdiction if you have an ILA. I went, oh, great. All right. So worked with Randy Skinner down in Tarrant County. And basically, if the county has done all of their striping work, they do entertain work outside of the county as long as there's an ILA with it. This ILA that's presented to you is a maximum cost of two thousand dollars. And I will tell you that the quotes we were getting for the entire restriping of Westport definitely had two numbers in front of that comma. So we are seeing significant savings there. We could pay for this out of street funds without having to come through with a budget amendment. So staff recommends approval of the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for the restriping of Westport Parkway. And this includes from the city limits to FM one fifty six.
Let me start my comments with with congratulations for for pursuing that. Obviously, when you're talking two digits in front of the in front of the comma versus the the one that we have, you know, that's that's quite a saving. So thank you for for doing that. Anyone have any questions or comments for Travis? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
This is Harold. I move we approve the ILA with Tarrant County for the restriping of Westport Parkway and authorize mayor to execute the documents.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Morrow seconds.
Morrow seconds. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's do another roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tonya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes four zero. Nine G discuss, consider an act on a potential donation of the chapel building located in Old Town Haslett. Travis, you're going to do a recap?
Yes. So the item before you is the chapel building donation. I actually received a call today from the church asking what the status was, and I said that it would be on the agenda tonight. The last update you had was at September eighth, twenty twenty. You're presented additional information regarding potential renovation costs. Staff was directed to obtain more information. So we initiated an asbestos inspection and a building code inspection after permission was granted from the property owner to look behind the walls and the ceilings. I've attached a summary memo to this this report. And then, just as a reminder, under under the strategic plan, it was determined that an amount of two hundred and fifty three thousand was to remain in the plan until further information was gathered by staff. On the summary memo, I got stuck. The the summary memo includes everything that we we have gathered today for the chapel. Most items you had already been presented, but they're presented again. That way you have it all in one place. The asbestos inspection is new. Asbestos was detected in in the chapel in the in the floors and in the ceilings. If the chapel were to be moved, that asbestos containing material would need to be remediated prior to removal because of the potential for the asbestos to be shaken loose. I did talk with an asbestos removal company and they were quite hesitant to give a a cost basically because there are three types of asbestos out there. And it's not sure which one is in there. It's either white, brown or blue. But they gave a range for that typical size structure between fifteen and thirty thousand. They did give me some numbers on on what asbestos removal would be. Basically, additional testing to determine what type of asbestos is in there. The materials to remove it, you have to encapsulate the structure and the removal of the ceiling itself, they gave a range for. The next thing we did was we had building code come out. Both building code inspector Mike Thetford and also Metro Code came out and they were the ones that looked behind the walls to see what was what was good and bad. They noted that the building isn't generally in good repair, so that that means that the the bones are good. So the studs, the floor joists, the ceiling joists, the rafters, they're all visually sound. The building is not up to code. It needs bathrooms ADA accessible, exterior ADA improvements. As you enter the building now, it's three steps. There would need to be a ramp placed there. As noted in the inspection, the plumbing, HVAC and the plumbing, it's kind of a, there's no plumbing in there, but there is that that baptismal basin. So that plumbing, should it want to be reused, would need to be upgraded. Electrical system was noted in the inspection as being a fire hazard will need to be completely replaced. Additionally, all the wiring would need to be replaced in there. And any windows or doors would also need to be put into the energy code compliant. Finally, took this to the Development Review Committee, which consists of pretty much anybody that would have a a piece of if this were if this were brought to the city as a private development, how would we treat this project? So we met in a tabletop exercise to talk about fire code, occupancy load, what needs to be replaced? How much, yeah, everything that we could kind of think of. And we got down to that we we have a proposed location that's outside of the floodplain. There are utilities available there. That would need ADA improvements. It would need bathrooms. Depending on the occupancy, it may need a manual fire alarm. Talked with the librarian, Barb Thompson, and she may want to chime in here. But just to talk about what potential uses there are for for library programs. So with that, we've thoroughly investigated the chapel. There are still some unknowns. The final use of that building will dictate some of their unknowns and costs. If it's to be used as a visitor center, there'll be some additional finish out costs, you know, such as new walls, paint, potentially desks, chairs, that type of thing. If the building is used by the library or a meeting room for residents, the finish out cost could be different. It could just be a shell at one point and then just finished out similar to the community center. So staff estimates this final cost to be about five hundred thousand dollars. And that's taking the high estimate on the asbestos removal, the relocation costs that we have a hard bid for, the renovation, which we have a hard estimate for. And then adding about twenty percent into finish out and other project contingencies. While nobody noted termite, current termite damage, this is the one that I that I'm pulling out right now as a contingency. Nobody noted termite damage, but also there hasn't there if you if you say there's no termite damage and you find it, then that's a contingency that you have to you have to plan for. So that that's why that contingency is still in there and with the finish out costs. Like I said, there's a, I think it's thirty nine page report attached to this item. And with that, I will open it up for questions and perhaps Barbara would want to talk first. If she's still on the line.
Yes, I'm here. You pretty well covered it, Travis. It's you know, we wouldn't need anything in it.
I believe Mr. Halsey wanted to speak to this item. Gary, are you ready to talk now?
I am.
Okay, you have the floor, sir.
And we've got three minutes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm looking at these pictures here and to me, the bones look pretty shaky. And the building is in poor condition, but nonetheless, I got a prepared statement here. You know, as citizens, we elect our council members, our representatives, our stewards to conduct business in our best interest. In the interest of citizens who pay for all that the council decides what is good. There's much trust and responsibility placed in your hands as individuals, as a council. The fundamental role as the steward of our community business is to provide essential services to address health and safety and account for those expenditures. Once those services have been secured, often attention is turned to amenities such as community parks, libraries and programs that enhance quality of life for its people. These amenities are secured when we are financially on strong footing. But Justice Kurt May cited about our community's need for food drive to help our local citizens. We have all been touched by this economic shutdown due to the pandemic, of which is still on the rise. It has placed us all in a precarious times. Many in our community faced uncertain financial futures since our local governance, which includes state, county, municipal, our town, Since our local governments, which includes state, county, municipal, our town, are dependent upon to pay the taxes, the local governments are also in financial uncertainty as well. We as individuals, we as families are very judicious concerning how and when we spend our resources, our money. I, as well as other citizens, expect that the stewards that we have elected to run our business, to look out upon the townspeople, recognize the financial burdens, the uncertain times we're in and make decisions as we and each individual, as, as individuals make by ourselves and our families. Uh, you've heard me say this before, probably some of you. There's a reason that there's five council members. It's that in that assembly of five that we hope and pray the wisdom of God prevails. I'm gonna, I urge you not to obligate the people for five hundred thousand dollars on a structure that seems to be dilapidated and someone else wants to get rid of. It's unwanted. Now is not a good time for something like this and amenities such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council, it's, uh, on to you for discuss, consider and act.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, this is Sheila Kadoka from two seventeen O Desert Drive. Could I have just a moment?
You certainly may.
Thank you, and thank you everybody for listening to me. I just wanted to take a moment just to kind of, uh, encourage you and speak in favor of keeping the chapel. Um, it is one of the oldest buildings here in Haslett and, and when we preserve history, it helps keep communities, our communities beautiful and helps, gives people a stake in their surroundings by connecting them, um, with their past and with one another, especially when it comes to historical buildings. Um, buildings give us a sense of stability and they provide a tangible link for the townspeople and with the past for everyone to experience. That's really all I wanted to say to you guys. I just, uh, thank you for the consideration. Thank you for listening to me. And I just wanted to encourage you to keep the chapel. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being, uh, for taking the time to participate. We appreciate the input. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council, thoughts, questions, comments?
I would like to add that one of the possible uses of the hotel tax is historical restoration and preservation projects.
This is Harold. To me, this is a huge waste of money. Uh, that five hundred thousand dollars, we could, uh, buy a fire, uh, part of a fire truck or many, many other things. And so not only is it, um, it's, it's not only the half a million that we'd spend now, but we've already spent, I don't know how much on all these inspections. Plus, we are going to spend, uh, lots more money upkeep, um, and the costs just go on and on.
This is Mayor Protim. I'd like to second what, what, uh, some of the speakers before me have said. Uh, I think, uh, you know, the inspections that we did and finding out the true cost is, wasn't money well spent, but, uh, you know, this half a million dollar figure to me, especially in these times, as, uh, Mr. Halsey, uh, talked about, I think it's, it's the wrong time. Uh, I just can't see doing this, uh, when we're at, you know, when other people are struggling to pay their, uh, taxes this year. So, um, you know, maybe in, for some other time, it might've been a good idea. You know, I think we've looked at this, but, uh, we really don't have a, a specific purpose for it. Uh, it's not something we need at the moment. Well, I think it would be nice if we could preserve it. It's just the wrong time and the expense is too great. So that's my opinion.
This is the mayor, a couple, a couple of comments. One, at some point, uh, in our future, I don't know how soon or, or how far away that is. We've already had some discussions, strategic plan about, uh, about possibly, uh, a, a city complex that would include a library, a community center and all those kinds of things. We don't know where that would be located to me to try to, so what I'm trying to say is, is if we used this building as an overflow for the library and/or city hall, and that's our justification, and then we move to a different location altogether in the city, and I know that's a lot of what ifs, then we, we, uh, we lose some of, uh, some of the attraction in my mind for, for having that overflow capacity. The second item I would ask council to consider would be, and I wish this had been my idea, but, but a, a citizen approached me with this idea. And the, the idea is to approach our developers, our residential developers, and see if any one of them would consider using this building in a renovated state that, that they would be responsible for to, to be their amenity center. I don't know if it's big enough. Uh, and, and another option that was, was thrown out was to move it behind the fire station with our, our ball fields down there and make a, uh, a concession stand slash restroom for, for those. Now, there's another issue. I'll just, I keep talking here. Uh, we don't have plumbing back there yet, so we, we don't have sewer. So do, do we want to put in a lift station to be able to do something like that, uh, in, in the, in the long term? Uh, if we used it for that kind, so I, I threw out a couple of ideas. So, uh, just trying to, to chum the water a little bit. So I'll be quiet and, and, uh, listen to you folks.
This is Councilmember Morrow. I, there's so many things that people have said that I agree with. I mean, a lot of people, but we, we do have to be financially, um, smart. Um, we do want five council members to make a good decision. Um, I also agree that it's, our citizens deserve to have a stake in the community and have that sense of, of preservation, you know, past and future. Um, I think right now might not seem like the perfect time, but I know financially, you know, we are stable. We are at, at a, a, an interesting point where something that some would consider an amenity, we call, called it a quality of life, um, and multipurpose is, it might be the time, exactly the time to do it when we need something like that to, to bolster the community and, and, and bring back that, that sense of, you know, here's something tangible and physical that we can bring the community together to have the, the library and the visitor center. So I know the five hundred thousand, when I, when I first looked at was like, okay, this is, you know, a little more than, than what I had initially planned or thought. But I also know that's high end. That's, you know, we want it to be the, I wouldn't say worst case scenario, because there are some, like Travis said, some, I, some things we don't know about. But I, I feel comfortable with that number. I feel comfortable with that being something that, that we can provide a service for our citizens. So that's, that's just my two cents.
So something that I also, that I would like the council to consider is that we, we've been discussing this for quite some time. And I, I don't think we have to make a final decision tonight, frankly. In most of our most recent discussions, there has been a, a majority of council members that have been in favor of this project. And we're at a disadvantage tonight because we don't have everybody here. And to force this issue tonight, when not everyone has had the opportunity to contribute to this discussion at the time when we are being asked to make a decision, uh, I, I think that we should continue this item until our next meeting and allow that other, uh, council member who has participated in these discussions, who his, has an interest in it, whether that, we don't know how that person would vote tonight, but we know that tonight they don't have the opportunity to vote. So I would ask that we continue this item, and I, I can make that in the form of a motion. Um, and that way we get a, uh, we have an opportunity to have a five council member, uh, decision. And right now it's obviously split. And, uh, it would be good to hear that other council member's voice, I think. So, um, I'll wait till the, the end of the discussion, but that's a, that's a motion that I would like to make. Should I make that motion now?
Any other comments from anybody? Go ahead with your motion then.
Okay, so then I, I move that we continue this item to our, uh, next city councilman, uh, excuse me, next city council meeting, which I believe is, uh, first Monday in January. Perhaps the second.
Is there, uh, is there a second?
This is Councilmember Morrow.
I will not be at that next council meeting.
Okay, so can we amend the meeting to the second? Will you be at the second meeting in January, Harold?
No. I'll be here at the first meeting in February.
Okay, uh.
I'm, I'm amenable to doing that if, if that, if that is a, uh, I, I'd be glad to change my motion to the first meeting of February.
Tanya, were you, were you trying to second?
Yes, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, under further discussion, I would like a, a question to Travis. Did, did they give you any kind of feel when, when you talked to the church today? What kind of timeline they're looking at, Travis?
Uh, no, their timeline remains unchanged. Uh, they are just curious as to know, uh, what the city is going to do. They were actually just more curious if it was still up for discussion or not. So I can report that back to them tomorrow.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other for, further discussion?
Uh, as, as part of this, if we, if we agree to do this, uh, I wonder if, uh, we could request staff, and that would be Diana, to post, uh, would we consider putting something on our webpage asking for community feedback? Or is, or is that too vague a request? It sounds like, it sounds pretty vague, so.
Councilmember Hillborn, this is Diana Buchanan. I would be happy to, uh, research that with our city attorney and find out exactly, you know, what information we, we could do on the website and, uh, uh, we, we can get something out there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion items? Okay, we do have a motion and a sec, a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Uh, I'll vote aye. I, I do, uh, agree that it would be nice if all council members were representative, so I can wait till, till February.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Patrick, Patrick, excuse me, Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passed as four zero. This item's continued to the first meeting in February. Nine H, discussion of the Planned Alliance Texas Hasslet Accessibility Improvement Project groundbreaking event budget.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is brought to you just again as a discussion item, uh, looking for feedback, uh, ideas and to make sure there's no, uh, negative thoughts about it. And if there are, we would certainly like to hear those. Um, during their last meeting, I presented to both EDCs a, a proposed budget of fifteen thousand dollars. I have been meeting and discussing this, uh, with Hillwood. Uh, they have, uh, graciously agreed to help us coordinate this, um, groundbreaking event. Uh, and again, typically you pay about twenty thousand dollars for someone to, uh, to manage that process. And they're doing that just by giving us their lists and discussing the, uh, the event with me as we make these plans. Um, Type A voted or like, actually there were no negative comments of spending five thousand of the twenty-five thousand annual marketing budget from Type A on this. Uh, there was also no negative, uh, comments made. Everyone was in favor, uh, expressed, uh, favorable comments on spending ten thousand of the seventy-five thousand dollar Type B budget on this. Um, again, we missed an opportunity because of the NDA with a, uh, very large company that landed at the airport. I won't speak their name. Um, this event will be very big. Um, we anticipate, we anticipate having media at this event, uh, discussing all the projects, specifically ours, um, but all the projects and how they come together and create commercial opportunities along I-35. Um, this is, will be the chance to build relationships, uh, further with COG and Tech Dot and Tarrant County and all those partners who have pitched in on the project. Uh, so again, we're looking for feedback, uh, positive or negative, anything you may have. Uh, because it's so expensive, an event, uh, it does certainly fall under marketing. And because it will be so visible, we're just looking to make sure that council is, uh, is informed and, and believes that this is a, a good expenditure of those marketing funds. I'll take any questions you may have.
Uh, this, this is the mayor. I've got a, a quick question. Is it, uh, is it appropriate and or is it commonplace for the, uh, the contractor to contribute or to, to participate in something like this?
Mayor, I, this is our first. I have never heard of a contractor doing that. Travis may have different input. I don't know that I've ever seen a, uh, a winning bidder, um, put in on a groundbreaking. They're just there to build a project. But Travis, do you know if it's, that's something you've seen?
I, that, I haven't seen anything like that, um, unless they're perhaps a new contractor trying to earn trust in a community. But no, I've never seen a contractor, um, involved with any type of groundbreaking.
Does that mean we can't ask?
Financially involved, I mean, no, yeah.
I would want to run that by Rob to make sure that it doesn't, uh, have a, create a conflict of any kind. You know, they're, they're the winning contractor. I just would want to verify that, Mayor. Um, we always don't mind asking, but we also want control of this message. We didn't, we lost control on the, the big air project on the airport. We would really, I do personally, as a staff member, I'd like to keep control of this as much as we can. Um, and we do have the funding, but we don't mind asking, but I would like to run that to Rob first.
So I, I think the, to, to oversimplify, the question is, uh, would council or is council comfortable spending, uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars for a groundbreaking event to, uh, to celebrate, uh, the start of this road project?
Are we looking at January, February?
And yes, ma'am, we are still looking at, at late January, early February. I've actually had some communication with Tim Flure, and we believe that the work at the old elementary school will be completed by then. And we may be able to use that facility, that parking, painted parking lot for the event. That would give us enough hard space for tents and for the media to show up. Um, I didn't tell you that, uh, both Tech Dot and COG have also offered their PR arms to help write press releases and, and everything else to get this out there. So again, we're expecting to get a lot of coverage on this, um, as the culmination of I-35W, State Highway one seventy and this project create really a lot of opportunity for what we're hoping is the right kind of development for Haslett.
Uh, I, I don't mind their, their PR department helping as long as they know how to spell the name of our city. And that does not have an F or it's not spelled F-T-W-O-R-T-H.
And I'd just like to confirm, this is EDC money, right? Not general fund money.
Oh, EDC. E, EDC money in a, an approved category. It's again, just the, the size, visibility and nature. We would, we just really thought it was, I discussed this with Mr. Quinn, and we felt it was right to bring this to council for input.
But, I mean, to me, it sounds like it's a, it's a legally, uh, a legally agreed to, uh, expenditure of funds and, and we do have the money in the marketing funds. It's not coming out of, uh, taxpayers' money. I mean, it's sales tax money, but it's an appropriate expenditure. I, I would like to see us, uh, publicly thank our partners, you know, the, the, the right, rights of way that we've acquired, the, uh, the folks that we've had help us get to this point, you know, COG, Tech Dot. It'd be a great opportunity to thank all our partners publicly, uh, with the press there and, and, uh, let them know how much we appreciate everything that's been done to this point.
Yeah.
I agree.
Assuming we can, uh, do it socially distanced. Assuming we can, uh, do it socially distanced, I'm in, I'm in favor of it, I might even show up, if everybody agrees to wear a mask.
Well, it's our, I can dictate that.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I, I was just gonna say, it's our event, we can dictate wearing a mask, if, if you want to come to our event, you wear a mask.
Absolutely, and that's been the discussion with Mercedes over at Hillwood, is, uh, we're looking for enough space and enough space under tents with walls, uh, so that the wind is cut during that time of year, where people can be socially distanced and still enjoy the event. That's, the 15,000 is the top end, we are looking for a, an event that is worthy of Hasslet and this project and our partners, and that will bring the media out, but again, we do plan on it being held safe.
So I, I, I think what we're looking for here is, is if there's anyone who is uncomfortable with doing this, let us know, and we'll try to, we'll try to, uh, put some setup on whatever the issues might be, but, uh, the, the money's there, it's an approved budget item, uh, I, I think we can go forward unless we have somebody from council who's uncomfortable with us going forward with this. Uh, anybody that has an issue, I, I would like for you to speak up, just let us know, uh, otherwise, uh, this doesn't require a motion, it was just sharing the information and making sure that we all understand what's going on.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so I would say, go ahead, Thad, Jim? Okay, let's go on to nine.
It's just informative requesting input, uh, the EDCs have had a very good, um, we're having very good sales tax revenue right now from all the new construction of Alton and industrial, so, it is an approved budget figure, I think we're good.
Thank you, sir. Let's go on to nine I, discuss, consider an act to ratify the actions of Type B HCEDC Board which voted to approve an expenditure of up to $6,000 for water, water-filled barriers and amend the budget for same. Thad?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, this item, and, uh, Mr. Quinn shared a map, a question came out earlier, and, you know, we had not actually created a project map, which would have been helpful earlier on, uh, but y'all should have that now. Uh, what the EDC Board is trying to do is stop the very dangerous cut through traffic, uh, people start to stack up on Westport, and they are darting across the EDC-owned lot on the Schoolhouse Road, and that's been witnessed by several of the EDC Board members. And when the intersection was redone and those barriers were temporarily moved over there, uh, before they were moved off location, we noticed a great reduction in truck traffic, parking there, and that cut through. Uh, so what the Board unanimously approved on, during their last meeting, was to spend up to $6,000, which is about 16 of those water-filled barriers, and those little yellow dashes on your map are where those would approximately be located. Um, I do plan on, if y'all ratify this tonight, I'm gonna meet with, uh, the Type B President out there on Wednesday and more formally line that out, so that we make sure the, the fire plug is still accessible, and then if we have a new plan on that, we will certainly send it out, uh, through Mr. Quinn, uh, that he can send to council. So again, we always budget annually some money, uh, for each lot or building owned by the EDC, but because it's vacant, we only had $1,000 in that budget, so we would be adding $5,000 from the reserve. Please don't ask what that reserve is, I think it's about $3 million, so there's plenty of money there, uh, but we are looking for council to ratify that, if you are so inclined, so we can reduce that cut through traffic and increase safety there. I will answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, hopefully the, uh, the semis will quit parking there, too.
As you're aware, traffic seeks its own level, just like water, and when things start getting a little congested, um, motorists and truckers, uh, you know, cut some distance down and go from Westport to Schoolhouse, so I think this is a long time coming, and it's needed, and, uh, it is EDC-owned property, they have the liability, so I think it's more than justified expense.
If I may, uh, Travis helped create that map, and of course, he does all our traffic impact analysis reviews, I think he may have something to add on that one?
I do, uh, so, as Thad said, the, the cut down tra- the cut through traffic was cut, was, uh, almost eliminated, and the parking issues were almost eliminated when the Tech Dot let us kind of borrow those barriers when the intersection was redone. Um, as these are purchased through the EDC, uh, should they become available for use, uh, in the future? For Public Works, we could definitely use them, as opposed to just using cones, having some more of a rigid barrier, say if we are, um, you doing a water line break or anything like that, uh, these are good things to have, so they're multi-use, um, they don't degrade, they're UV-stable, uh, basically, we would just ask the fire department to come fill them up, hopefully Kirk, he can spare the water, and then that's all that we would, that we would keep using them for.
The EDC Board is completely in favor of, you know, again, sharing those when they're, you know, if we have enough time, when they really are needed beyond, uh, blocking that traffic, a cut through, um, you know, again, we're all partners here, and the EDC Board was all in favor of either when the lot sells and not needing them, them going to Public Works or, or otherwise.
And Thad, I would say that the Type B President came to my office and, and asked about the plan, and, uh, we pulled up the GIS map, and, uh, you, we, he'll be able to, uh, put that wall up without interfering with our fire hydrants, so I feel positive about that.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, okay, so, uh, to me, this is a, obviously, it's a, it's sort of a safety, uh, problem, and we absolutely need to do something, uh, but I wonder if there has been, was any consideration into, uh, putting a fence up instead, only for the aesthetic reasons, these, this orange, these orange barriers that would be there for years, uh, perpetuates the idea that we're under construction again, you know, uh, we're, we're sort of weary of seeing signs that tell us to leave this lane and go to that lane, and, you know, if we put up a, a fence, I'm not sure how the cost would be different, but even just a, a cattle fence would, uh, people wouldn't want to drive through that, they wouldn't want to damage their cars, and that's just, just a question I'm asking.
Councilmember, we had actually looked at that, there was a cost consideration, and there was a visibility consideration when you're talking about cattle fence, you end up having to put, um, the same kind of visibility things along that fence to make sure people don't run through it. Um, so again, I, if, if y'all are inclined, I can certainly take that back to the Board, but we did look at other options, and again, the cost ended up, for a true safe fence that was not gonna look like this with having those, uh, notices up there every few feet, that there was a fence there so somebody didn't drive into it, um, was a little greater than they wanted to spend on a vacant lot, but, um, again, it, we looked at it, we can certainly look at it again if that's your preference.
Do you recall the, the ballpark of the cost?
No, ma'am, I do not, um, I, I just remember it was something along the lines of, no, we're not gonna go that path, and we were gonna go, need to spend the money on an engineer and have an engineered fence and run that through P and Z, so again, that was just abandoned for this option.
I, I know it's several years.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, what are the rest of y'all think, I, I'm, these things should be for temporary uses, and we're talking about possibly for years having them up, and, uh, it's, um, I think we should consider that, maybe even, maybe, maybe we need to pitch in some money so that it's a little bit better than just, uh, uh, big orange blocks, but, but if, if I'm, if I'm mistaken and this is the best thing to do, I think we should do something.
Well, the, a, a problem, uh, i- is that with, with a cattle fence, similar to what we got over on John Day Road, you can't see that at night, you would be able to see these barriers, uh, the other thing I would bring up i- is that we're all very hopeful that in two and a half years, Hasslet Parkway will have taken the brunt of traffic off of Westport, and we won't have this kind of an issue, and, and hopefully, we can remove them, uh, as that roadway is, is completed. So I, yes, but, but to, to your point, Trish, i- it would be a, a minimum of two, two and a half years that they would be up, based on what we know today. Any, any other comments, questions about, uh, alternatives to, to the water-filled barriers?
This is Councilmember Morrow, I understand your concerns with it looking like a construction zone, um, Trish, but I, I mean, I've seen these out, and I think it's pretty obvious what the, the use is, which is to deter the, the cutting through, and so I, to me, it looks almost fence-ish when they're kind of together like that, um, on the little yellow lines, that mean they'd be spaced out, or would they be actually connected like the picture?
We are still working on that, Councilmember, um, Travis has, has shown it such that it can extend, uh, farther by, or further, what is that one, who's my English teacher here? Uh, it can cover a greater distance by spacing those out where a car still couldn't get through there, um, but again, until we get on site, and I will, again, send out an updated map, I, I don't know exactly what, uh, Mr. Gardner thinks, um, because it, this has been something that he's very involved in, his involvement in the fire, involvement in safety, and involvement as president of the Type, uh, B Corporation, again, he's, I'm gonna meet him out there Wednesday morning, um, so yes, the plan, current plan is written or shown, is they would be slightly spaced apart to cover more area, but that may not be necessary, again, once we get out on site, no.
Right, I would, I would think aesthetically that, yeah, then put together, and then a space, and put together in a space, you can still spread out, but it would look more like fencing slash barrier than big cones, so.
I would agree, again, if you have an orange-white-orange, and then go move a few feet, and then white-orange-white, it would certainly look a little more, uh, again, more fence.
That, that's the, I was just gonna add that, that they don't have to be orange, they can be all orange, all white, or an altern- alternating orange-white pattern.
It was preferred, Travis, that they be alternating, half of the barriers be white and half be orange, for the safety.
And, and Jim did send a, a message out this afternoon at 1:55 that showed, uh, showed the alignment of the, uh, the barriers themselves.
And again, they are only needed on one side, we don't want to cut off Mr. Lee from any of his parking, but the purpose is just to stop that cut through, and that cut through comes from Westport Parkway onto Schoolhouse during busy times.
So they just, they just cut right across the, the traffic coming at them to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone want to tack a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to ratify the actions of the Type B HCEDC Board which voted to approve an expenditure of up to $6,000 for water-filled barriers and amend the budget for the same.
This is Harold, that's second.
Harold seconds, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Nine J, discuss, consider an act, excuse Mayor and Council absences, I think we heard Harold might be, uh, on, on the C possibly in, in, in January, but, uh, a- anyone else have, have an upcoming absence? Okay, let's go to, uh, ten, receive report from Public Improvement District Subcommittee. Uh, Rob, are you on yet? Okay, e- either one of the committee members want to say anything?
No, this is the mayor pro tem, we had no meetings, uh, this period.
Okay. A- anyone have any questions for the Subcommittee? All right, number 11, Exec, I don't think we need it tonight, uh, hear anybody say we do? Okay, number 12, nothing coming out, because we didn't have Exec, anyone have anything for future agendas?
This is Councilmember Minmar, I do have a possible agenda item for January, if you think it's something we might be interested in doing. So I did have a, a few, um, citizens talk to me about Main Street and the, the condition of the road, and I've driven it myself, it's, it's pretty, um, pretty rough, I guess is the right word, I was just wondering if we wanted to consider possibly why the, um, Henrietta Creek Bridge replacement is being done, and that road is already, I wouldn't say completely closed, but you can't go that direction, of possibly doing the Main Street repairs at the same time, or in conjunction, or back to back, so.
We didn't place an item on the agenda, Councilmember Morrow, at your request, nobody discussed the assignment at this time.
Right. Sounds good. Put it on the agenda for the 4th of January, sounds good. Anybody else have anything for future agendas? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 8:27, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody. Thanks for a great job tonight.
Y'all be safe, please.
Stay safe for the rest of the year.